Calling the regular session of Dune City Council on Wednesday, May 24 at 6:00 P.M. Any roll call, please?
Mayor Meyer.
Present.
Council President Snow.
Here.
Counselor Rory Hammond.
Here.
Counselor Duke Wells.
Here.
Counselor Tom Mallon.
Here.
And I have not heard from Counselor Orr, but I do expect him.
He's up.
Oh, did he just?
He's walking in.
Oh, he's walking in now.
How quick does he walk you?
Should be there in a minute, sir.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Ready, one, two, three. Hi, Bob!
Did you call my name yet?
Yeah.
Here?
You just...
Oh, where am I sitting? I don't have seats.
You're standing right now.
Oh, okay. Oh, thank you for telling me that. Oh, there's a seat in there.
Just snuggle in between you. We're working her sound equipment.
Oh.
So, you know, if you see one right in front of you, that's because we didn't talk about it.
I'm going to leave it to the citizens of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Do you need a motion to approve the agenda? So.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So who?
Sir.
All those in favor?
Who's the second?
What?
Okay, Tom, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, we're into announcements.
Dune City Council will hold a public hearing and consider adoption of the budget for fiscal years 2022 through 2024 at its next regular session on June 15, 2022, at 6:00 P.M. That means I really, really, really need a quorum that night. Thank you. Individuals who receive their water from Wauhine Lake by relying on the city's water right permit, which we call the Dune City Shared Domestic Water Supply Program, must have their meters replaced with radio read meters and approved fish screens installed with information regarding pumps, gallons per minute, horsepower, and pipe size to Dune City before October 1 of 2022. If you will contact Dune City Hall, we now have manufactured fish screens that have preapproval from Fish and Wildlife, so if you're applying for the tax credit, it's already got preapproval. Just contact us and we'll help you fill out the paperwork and get that in. Also, I am in the process of calling individuals to make arrangements to have their fish screens installed, so if you have not purchased one, please do so, but if you are already a customer of another, of a plumbing company that you've made arrangements with, they will be diving soon, so don't call them. They'll get, they know what to do and they won't be contacting me. Okay, I told you about the fish screens available for purchase. I do still need that information regarding gallons per minute, how big the pump's pipe size is. Divers can gather that when they install your fish screen. We are seeking volunteers to help maintain our roadways as our former volunteer is no longer available. If you're interested in helping out, please contact Dune City for further information. And the Oregon Dunes Triathlon will be held on Saturday, June 11. Volunteers should go to the Best in the West Events website to register. All you have to do is go to bestinthewestevents.com, scroll down, and hit the register button, and fill in all the information. If you need help, give us a call here at City Hall.
Okay. Is there some input on that? Have we discussed the public hearing?
There is none.
All right. Presentation speakers, none. Hold business. Appointment of city councilor to finish out the remaining term of Sheldon Meyer. That term expires January 18, 2023, and the election ends this year. I'm assuming that's in November.
Right, and so packets will be going out in July. Or August.
So do we have recommendations from the committee?
We do have to ask the committee. I didn't participate.
All right.
First off, I wanted to thank all the people that applied, Bonnie Allen, Richard Olson, and Melissa Stinson for applying. We had such great applicants with such great credentials. It was very difficult for the committee to come up with someone as a top runner, so I consider you all equal. It was really hard to make a decision, so the council actually met a couple times to make a good decision on this. But the council would like to put forth the name of Melissa Stinson to replace the term Sheldon Meyer.
And the third was, what, the end was?
It was Bonnie Allen, Richard Olson, and Melissa Stinson.
Okay. Do you need a motion?
I think the other people on the committee wanted to speak too.
Okay, and the others were?
Yeah, two of us. Yeah, I again want to repeat the fact that this was an extremely difficult decision. Each of the candidates brought something very special and, and very valuable, and any one of the three, in our opinion, would be an excellent council member. So we were in the unenvious situation of having to choose only one, but again, I want to say what Susan said is just to thank you all for putting forth your names and, and to say what an incredibly impressive group of people we looked at.
Pretty much the same thing. I was on the commission to pick, pick a candidate, and I thought the same thing, that they're all very, very talented, very worthy of the position. I think it says a lot about Dune City when you get that caliber of people wanting to be involved up here and to help out. I, I hope that anyone that didn't make it considers running for council in the upcoming election because it'd be a great asset to, to Dune City and its future.
There are two of you that are willing to resign tonight, aren't there?
I may not have anything safer. I'm up for election.
You may have a better place to live.
I may not.
Well, I thought you were resigning. We're replacing you, by the way.
I think so.
Yeah, I think so.
So we have a recommendation from the committee. Do we need a motion to approve that?
I have some.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? I appreciate the comments, positive comments about all three of the candidates who applied. I think that does say a lot about us, about the city, maybe about...
So part of the discussion was that I, I thought we were going to come back and tell us their qualifications and say that they're all greatly qualified. I thought, I thought that we were going to hear, hear certain things like their backgrounds, and I'd like to know what that is before I vote on it. Maybe we'd like to have her speak or something. I mean, I'm not objective to it, but I, I think that if you went through this process and there was, then there were certain features or things that makes, helps the team, that's great to know, and I think...
Really was a set question. It was kind of just, you know, off the cuff, and each one was, we didn't ask the same questions of each one in a, in a general way we did, but, you know, it, it, you know, I think that's why we had the committee to go through that sort of, that we did.
Yeah, I understand that we had the committee to make a recommendation from the council, and they had screened them adequately. Well, I'm sure they, I'm sure they did.
I'm sure the candidates are here, so if you want to ask them questions, you're good.
The only thing that I had asked, and I'm assuming what, is if they had an elevator speech.
We don't expect them to have that until after.
Right, I was going to say, so either we're running in our office, yeah.
All right, it sounds like we have a recommendation. Wait for the question in a second. All those in favor of Melissa Stinson, 65, is hanging on?
Aye.
Any opposed? I think it's unanimous, Jamie.
Thank you.
We're now to ordinance number 256B, short-term vacation rentals, first and second reading.
I do not have everything ready to swear Melissa in tonight, so at the next meeting, Melissa will swear again.
You'll give her a packet before hand so she can come prepared.
Oh, she got one too. Sherwood's picked one up.
On the public hearings, I'm opening the public hearing at 10:00.
You have to have first, first reading, and first and second reading. I'm sorry, do the best you can.
Is there anyone on the council that would like to have a read by more than just the title already? Most of them read by title only.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And the title is, I'm ready to hear some, remember? It needs to add, if you go loosely, if you might can...
Yes, I'm sorry. You want me to read it for you?
No, that's like, ordinance number 256-B, and ordinance adding new chapter 123 to title 12 of the Dune City Code of Ordinances entitled Short-Term Rentals and Other Matters Departmentally Relating thereto.
At this point, you would have asked for a staff report.
Staff report.
And the, we talked about it and talked about it. Changes have been made. I highlighted them. Hopefully, this was made so that you can see which parts were highlighted. I did receive that confidential memo from the attorney, and so I just want you to be made aware of that, but that was the language that he provided.
Any questions, both of you?
So are we going to use this language that was written?
This is the language that I used in it.
Not what was in mine, so that's why I'm down.
Oh, maybe I forgot to take it out of that other section, because it's in a different section now. I thought that it was.
So 12312, that's C, and B, 85D. Yeah, that's right. Well, if we did, if we did, I didn't, I don't remember seeing a title. I checked, I get it.
Okay, one change was on, on page five.
Right.
On new paragraph B.
Yeah, I guess it is.
Okay, it's under, the other one was under insurance, is what I was reading.
Right.
And that was page five. Oh, there's a page. This says here.
What page is it?
I'm looking at the...
The bottom of that one.
Okay, thank you.
That was a little bit different, but...
Yeah, okay, that's right.
My thing in there, it still had the, and has the minimum levels contained in section 123.012, may satisfy the requirement. I thought that was maybe left over from being deleted.
Yeah, that was, it was a rough of it from being deleted.
Yeah, on top of page nine.
Right, the whole sentence there that starts on page eight at A homeowners.
And that was meant to be deleted?
Yes.
So the entire section C on page eight, on top of page nine, is to be deleted?
No.
From, from, and, oh, from the homeowners?
Well, it's just that one sentence, A homeowners' insurance policy endorsement through to the end of that sentence, and still leaves the sentence, "Any insurance policy must cover the actions of tenants or invitees of the short term."
Okay, thank you.
That's what I thought, but I just wanted to be sure.
Yeah, I'm sorry. The other thing that I would need you to decide, and it is not currently in the language, is whether, right now, it is established as a one-time fee. If you want it to be something that expires annually, then I need to be instructed to do that so I can add the language in there so that it will. And it'll be the same language that I, we have in the, in the business license code for renewals.
And what is the fee for this setup?
When you guys set it, well...
Hasn't been done?
Yep.
This is for the permit for short-term?
Yeah, permit to have a short-term rental.
Okay, so we're still in discussion of this part, right, or, because we're not in the public, public hearing is closed or open? We gotta open it?
Yeah, I opened it, yeah. We're still in staff report. And that's what I said, I said, need that done.
So are we ready for public hearing?
So you are ready for public hearing unless other, there's other questions of staff?
I'm opening the public hearing at 6:17. Anyone in the public want to comment? Seeing none, I close the public hearing at 6:18. Now, do we need a second reading of the?
Yeah, you'll have to do the second reading.
Okay, is there anyone who objects to just a reading of the, a move that we read it by, by, thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, the second reading, ordinance number 256-B, and ordinance adding a new chapter 123 to title 12 of the Dune City Code of Ordinances entitled Short-Term Rentals and Other Matters Departmentally Relating thereto, as amended by revision of the last sentence beginning on chapter 8, in the top of chapter 9. All those in favor?
Well, well, discussion? Discussion, thank you, thank you. So there's two things. One, one is the, the limit for billing or the permit fee, and I know that the, it's supposed to be renewed at the time that the property's been sold or moved like that, and I think that's too long if somebody's going to keep property for 20 years or 15 years, but, and I think, I, I see the permit fees or renewal as a way of tracking, so, as a tool to make sure we get our, our money from the, from, from the rental, from the taxes, room taxes. So, and I don't know if we need to have a permit every year, but maybe we ought to make it, make it last every other year, or five years, or something like that, and have, and staff can do a cycle billing sort of thing, so they don't have to put out 30 or 40 bills every time. I'm not sure. This is a matter of discussion. I'm not going to make a, a motion for amendment until we talk about it, but I, but that's what I thought about it. I, I think annually would be one way to keep track, because I think if we don't do it, we won't be able to keep track until they sell the place, and I think something like the two-year or five-year.
I was, I was thinking along the same lines. I was thinking maybe two years, but I do think we should hear from, from Jamie about what kind of impact that's going to have on you and your staff.
Well, in year three, when I realized I forgot, because I didn't have a year two.
Sleepless night or two.
Right. No, I have wonderful staff that has a much better memory than I do. I, I really don't, I don't have an opinion. It's whatever you guys want to do.
Well, I was thinking since we're going to a, a two-year budget, then maybe...
Go for two years.
That makes sense.
All in place there, too.
Yeah, that's good, that's a good...
Yeah.
So I moved amend that to make the, the fees to be two years.
Does the fee itself, Jamie, go into this document, or is that a separate decision?
It will be a separate, just, it'll come forward as a resolution.
Okay. Is there a fee now?
No.
Why, why are we requiring fees? I mean, what is it to cover? What cost to permit?
The cost of the permit, to cover office expenses and tracing the permit. I mean, seriously.
So I would assume it would be very small. Yeah.
Well, that's up to you guys.
What order? So I made a motion to make it two years, and I didn't get a second, and then we could discuss it. And so, if we didn't get a second, a dive in, a second?
A second.
Oh, okay, so now we can discuss it.
Thank you, Rory. I'm sorry, I'm not very good at this.
Yeah, it's a discussion. Yeah, so now, so do you think we should be having a fee or not? Or should we, or should we, we haven't talked about how much. It's just that the length of permit and the probability of fee to service it.
Well, you can talk about monitoring for the resolution, too.
Okay.
I, I guess I'm, I'm just not understanding what work is being done to even warrant a fee, or how much work is being done. And then how long has it been going on without fees? It seems to have worked fairly long.
Well, it hasn't been for a minute.
Yeah, right. Well, and, and the motion isn't talking about fees, the, the motion really is applying to how long the permit lasts, and we can, and that, I think we probably could do and not worry about fees, but I just think that it needs renewed more than just when the property's changed over.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be fine for just tracking, but not monetarily in this.
That's a, that's a... And actually, we'll get the reimbursement from the taxes.
It also provides a way that I can shut somebody down if they will not correct the problems that are going on.
Yeah, and you need to have that.
I think that would be the one thing in particular that would be most desirable to have. I just hate to punish everybody for it, so when you get to talking about how much, bear that in mind.
Since we're not talking about fees right now, I'll just have one more thought for that topic, which is that, to me, it seems important to have some kind of a fee, because it establishes in some way an importance to, to the process, I think, but we can get to that later.
So we can vote on a couple of questions for the amendment. There's a question for the amendment. All those in favor, 65, is hanging on?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we want to set a fee tonight?
I would suggest that you wait until I bring a resolution forward.
That would be wonderful.
However, it would be nice to have, kind of have, well, I'll bring a suggestion.
So should we, a move on adopting the ordinance for that?
I move it in.
Second?
I didn't, I didn't...
Yeah, there...
We need clarification on who made and seconded. There were two motions.
I made the motion to amend.
And I seconded.
Seconded, and then I made the motion to approve, and Bob seconded.
To approve the ordinance.
Yeah. That way you don't have to, no, I was all over next.
Right.
Or...
Copy.
Or restore.
Yeah.
But ours and hers are...
Yeah. All right, thank you. Moving right along, we can begin. Do we need to say all in favor for all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
That's for both of them.
Yeah, so we, we voted, or we already voted for the...
Yeah, they voted for the other, that's why I was...
All right, our next order of business is bill of issuance series 2022, number 8, authorizing city to apply for submerged land enhancement grant from the Department of State Lands for acquisition of land for Rebecca's trailer.
I just want to apply for a grant. I have to have your approval. I have not, couldn't, I have not talked to you, I haven't talked to the property owner. It's all just very, I don't want to start doing that until I know I've got money behind what I'm, what I would like to do.
And we apply for a grant, and we haven't received?
We don't know whether we've received it. It's not actually a grant that's due until May 31st, so...
So you just want us to show you the key?
But I have to be able to show that you approved me applying for the grant. You'll still have an opportunity to say no later on.
All right. Do you need a motion?
I move that we authorize the, the city to apply for a submerged lands enhancement grant from the Department of State Lands for acquisition of land for Rebecca's trailer.
Approval of resolution number series 2022, number 8.
Take it. Yes.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, of course. We, I, we, so you specifically put one property there?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and you don't have any plans of doing the other properties?
No.
Or anything else for that?
There's only one property left. If, if this were to go through, there's only one property left.
Yeah, I, I was a little confused about, I, I don't want to, so, okay, that's great, because we can talk about if it's a right property or not property, where it is and all that.
The other property is way too expensive. It's for sale right now, but it's way more expensive.
Do we call this question?
It's already been approved, hasn't it?
No, we didn't.
Oh, okay.
I have the discussion, so, and the, and so it's for purchasing the property. I lost my train of thought. That's okay. Lost my train of thought. I was going to ask her one more question, but I forgot it, so it's a possibility.
I'll figure it tracks there, so we don't need to turn this over.
But I can tell you that this particular property owner has proclaimed that we do not have a roadway through there, and that we cannot cross his property, and he will sue. And rather than avoid prolonged, I mean, I would, I would like to avoid prolonged litigation if I can, but we don't have the money to flat-out offer to purchase it, so if we get the grant, that's why I want to do it. I want to try to save money in the long run.
Yeah, that's helpful, yeah, thank you. Call for question? Call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass it down to me. We don't have any questions. Reports, community center?
Do we need to get another storage table? I still see we have these things underneath.
Yeah, I haven't loaded them up and taken them over. I'm still, we took the shelf home and painted it, so it's still in my garage, and we don't have a flatbed to bring it back. Anytime you want to, you want to be at, or I'll get ahold of you. Maybe not during roadie day weekend?
Probably not.
Especially during the parade.
You want our quality report?
We're still waiting to hear back from the states on the new process that they would like us to follow.
Okay. Little reports?
I have one.
All right.
Inside it. So there's a couple more, two more potholes on Buckskin Bob. I have a question on the, the parks there. There's a, do we, is that part of our streets?
Yes.
So there's a pothole there, and there's been a, a trailer that sticks out into the roadway there on the second park, not the first one, but the second one, one time. It's not like that.
On Hilltop?
On, off the Hilltop, yeah, but you go around, there's, it's still...
Down at the bottom of, of the round one at Bird Park?
Yeah, that's where, and that's Bird Park, yeah.
Yeah.
That's where the potholes are.
I know, it's falling apart.
Okay. And then Buck, you see, Buckskin Bob's has new potholes, and Chet's trailer needs sweeping, and the Hilltop and Osprey, they probably could use some tree trimming. That's an item for it.
Susan?
My report's about the same as the last time I turned in, except with all the rain that we've had, the overgrowth of bushes converging on the roads is quite narrow, quite through the roads in Westlake, so I would like to see them turn back.
I have made a request to the county to come in and do that for us, because we don't have anybody to do it.
All right.
Not I.
Not you?
No.
Okay.
I have to change my strategy on the roads in my area. I've been kind of going on complaint-driven, you know, just bad given, but out there driving around.
Yeah, that'd be what we're doing.
Yeah, it will be.
And my report is saying is the, the last time, the roads are good, the overhangs and, and bushes are growing there, too.
Yeah, and we are on the county's work list. Unfortunately, they can't do... Unfortunately, they can't do our work till they finish theirs, which, you know, is going on three years now. So, we've been on that list for a long time.
And we're still ahead of time.
We do have the lift truck back. The brakes don't work. I'm not really sure how they got it here, but I'm sure they towed it.
I don't know how they got it here, but how did they stop it when it got here?
Yeah, I know, it hit that curb up there, I guess. But, so, when Brent and I have a chance to talk about it, Brent can do repairs, and he also has the license he needs to operate it. We can maybe get him started on that. As for the cop car, the cop car, I, and maybe that's what, what Richard meant is that the cop car's brakes have gone out, and maybe not this. I'm not exactly clear on that, but he is afraid to drive the cop car, so...
So, if we parked the cop car by the Cloud Nine sign, would that disappear too? Oh, okay. We all hope.
Yeah, totally hope. Anyway, so I've got to figure out a way to get the cop car back, back here.
How far away is it? I think you told us, but I can't remember. Where is it located?
It is about halfway between Earhart Road and View Terrace on Clear Lake Road.
And would it be parked where it was parked out here in one of the spots?
That's where I was, yeah, just going to, that needs to go across the street.
What is?
The lift truck needs to go across the street.
Oh, right. Sure.
Yeah, there should be no upholstery damage to the rear, because in the cop car, the back seat is just plastic.
Yeah, and that's all this is, is it's plastic. But it was already moldy so bad that I couldn't drive it, because I would break out, I couldn't breathe in there. Thank you to the Florence PD for donating that. That was so nice of you.
Do we have any kind of towing insurance that we could...
That's a good question. I can look into that and see, maybe bring it back here.
Well, yeah.
Or bring it to the shop to less schwab or something.
Or towing is reliable, and yeah, just get the thing back in shape.
Okay, I can get that checked.
Or patrolling these neighborhoods.
You're good to go.
Well, there are just so many complaints and so many problems, and I know the deputy, there's one deputy really, and that's what it finished real bad. It would be great if we could do that. I don't think it, I have a million little costs. We can't, in order to dispatch to Florence and radios and things like that, and do some sort of an inter-agency, government, whatever they call that, IGA, I guess could be possible. I think the secret is volunteers keep the price down and keep some...
Now, the radios have all been removed, and that...
And that's maybe something we want to step up and get one, you know, or get out. But then, if we do, then where is, who's that radio going to talk to? Will it talk to Florence, or will it talk to somebody here, or do we just wing it and try and get the Lane County deputy on a cell phone if something goes down? That's why we ran the state police volunteer.
Would the volunteers get deputized in some way? Is that how that works?
Background check is pretty rigid.
Yeah.
I don't know that it goes as far as FBI background. The state police usually does the background checks. Not pretty much yet. They're not sworn, volunteers, they're not quote-unquote sworn, so they don't go to an academy. But we need people, obviously, to know what they're doing, that are not nuts, you know, common sense. This is really, and communication, and being able to work with public, handle issues and not, you know...
Make them acceptable.
...fly off the handle, you know, there's ways of dealing with that. And I think, boy, I'm sure you'll watch with this community, I'll tell you that, just across the...
Any of you, state services reports?
There are a lot of trainings coming up right now, but other than that, no, I don't. I wish, we'll get heavier into that when I am done with fish creams.
So, you've heard the quote, now, is that the...
Yeah, it's all fish creams all the time.
Great.
Huh?
I said, okay.
Well, there are other things. Just a second, I'll be back. I'm guessing you all read it anyway.
Yeah.
Grant season, Peninsula Drive Water System is looking good, kind of long. Oh, that's it, yeah, that pretty much covered everything.
Okay. Pretty good on the order. Anything? Bob?
I'm good, everything that Bob talks about.
Yours good.
Okay. Have you found a running watch after?
Maybe.
Oh, wait. It does, but it doesn't always match what you're, it's your, you guys shouldn't start the meeting on time, that's the problem. It's not my problem.
Newt? Anything?
I'm good, thank you.
Well, I'm fabulous. No, I actually was taking those cut, the ethics class, and I noticed there's a bunch of them there. I couldn't find, I saw, I didn't see one for elected officials on cyber security, which you sent, but I'll read theirs.
Well, they particularly mandate cybersecurity, harassment, and...
It's the cybersecurity basics, I think.
Okay, so, one of the things that happened to us, apparently, if you know what phishing is, you can send emails and people counterfeit the headers. I can send you something saying I'm Dune City, and people, somebody got a bill apparently from Dune City Admin, and it was, it had to be a phishing account. So, when people get those, you know, there's a, you go Google how to report phishing scams, there's an organization that you report it to, there's actually two plates in the FTC, that they are, I really encourage people to do that, to report them, because it's not Dune City, but you get those phishing scams, and if some of them are really obvious, I do them. The other thing is, my email address is iinet.com, so most of the mailing places have a place called abuse@inet.com, or abuse@charter.com, or whatever, and you can forward those things there, and sometimes they'll do something about it. All right. Need a motion to adjourn? Some of them, second. Everybody moved.
Everybody moved. Was that, was that Bob and you?
No, we didn't move.
Oh, well, who did? Who made the motion?
It was, it was Rory and Tom.
Oh, Rory and Tom.
And I think we had a second in there too, somewhere.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're over. So, before you came up, she put the clock up there. It went around twice.